That's Rabino and somebody called iPad NDB.
Yeah, Rabina might not be able to, she's uh seen a doctor today.
Um it's um Rabina's son, she's next to me but she can't speak. Because she's had her tooth removed.
Oh.
Yeah.
Um so she's given me a s- uh her s- her speech kind of thing, her statement. And she was wondering if you wanted, if I could read it as she can't speak for one or two days.
I'm sure that would be.
There's no problem with that.
Have a problem? No, no problem.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
I shall remember not to have my teeth removed.
Robin, you haven't got any, I thought you didn't have any. You put them by the side of your bed in a glass.
No, 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 I've still got them, mate.
Shall we start the meeting?
I think that would be a good idea.
Welcome everybody to our full council meeting.
Leaving, Mayor.
Leaving, Mayor.
Nice to see everybody. Oh dear, right. We shall start with item one on the agenda, the any apologies for absence?
Uh we've received apologies from Buckinghamshire councillors Warren White and Charlie Clare.
Alright, okay. Alright, thank you.
Group meeting.
Any declarations of interest?
Not for me.
Not for me.
Uh may I just make it known, uh please, uh chairman, that um one of the candidates, Nick Bailey, lives next door to me. Not that it has any influence, but uh I'll just make that statement.
Okay. Um I was going to ask if we can move the votes for the candidates um.
Public session first.
Oh, sorry, public session first we have. We've got one person, haven't we? Oh, yes.
I believe so, yes. Stephen, are you there?
Yes, hi, good evening.
Hi. Welcome to our meeting, yes, so do you want to carry on?
Well, I'm gonna kick off, am I?
Yes, certainly.
Oh yeah, well, okay. Thank you very much. First off, thanks very much indeed for inviting me to speak to this evening, and it's very um unusual circumstances. I'd much prefer to be in a room with you all, I think, and be able to see all your faces at the same time, but nonetheless.
Uh excuse me, that's not, I can see Stephen.
Yes.
Yeah, that that's Stephen. Where's that one's? Nick Bailey, I believe.
Yeah, we needed to, Stephen's in the public session, so it was Stephen we need to listen to.
Yeah.
He's muted. He's muted.
Stephen, can you hear us?
I think he's just shouting for help by the looks of it.
Stephen will need his son to switch him on.
Yeah.
Is that done? Alright, good evening, everybody. Sorry, I had to get my son to come in because obviously I'm I'm totally blind, so I'm I'm I have to get somebody to give me a bit of help on this. Plus, if I don't appear to be looking at you, then obviously because I I don't know where you are, but I know you're all there, which is a good thing. Now, um thank you for letting me come and talk this evening. I've obviously come to sort of bring public awareness to various things that have been going on locally. And you're probably well aware of what I've been pushing on Buckingham what matters to you. Uh regarding Mr George Zua, who was one of our residents who died back in March. So I'm actually, I've actually come to the meeting tonight to sort of ask for help in a sense of, I'm not asking for money, I don't, I'm not sort of coming to the the meeting to say we need money, I just wanted to bring your awareness of, you know, what's happening with George? What's happening with homeless people and vulnerable people locally? And basically, I I'm looking for your support in those areas, and in particular in the case of George. If you know people locally or know local businesses that can help us raise the funds we're trying to raise, I'd be over the moon. But the real reason why I'm in this meeting tonight is to sort of bring to your awareness of how bad things were for this gentleman, the fact that he's completely slipped through the net. I mean, and that's aside from the fact that, you know, we went to a great deal of trouble, um myself and as long as I don't drop names. Um Robin Struxbury, he and I worked very closely together to actually get George the flat he had up on up on Lace Hill. Now, as you're aware, that's not an easy process to go through. It took us considerable time, effort, contacts and a great deal of work on on Robin's part. But the problem we have in Buckingham is quite straightforward. We have a problem with various people being down and out and other problems like that. But the way we address the problem in the main is either by sending people up to Lock Meadow Farm and that's out of the way, or we we quite simply leave it to churches. And let's face it, the churches have an awful lot on their hands and they don't have time to do these things. And then it comes down to individuals in Buckingham who have to, you know, work on helping those people. And it's not just the down and outs in Buckingham, it's not just people like that. We've got a number of people in Buckingham and because we have Black Lives Matter on the agenda, this is why I'm bringing this into the into the free. Are you still hearing me?
Yeah, yes.
Um I can think of when I was running the community centre in front of the library. We had a number of people of mixed race or coloured who had issues in Buckingham and weren't getting that support. In the case of George, um he had a lot of people who didn't understand his problem because obviously although he was an ex-mental nurse, he also had his own issues. And people locally didn't know how to deal with that. So what I'm trying to do is bring awareness to the whole of Buckingham that we do have people in the community who need help. There are channels we can go through, there's things we can do that bring the community together. Bring everybody out there so we don't have people like George falling through the net. Staying in his house for two weeks, I mean, he literally was dead for two weeks in his house. There was no community support for it. There's only the people like myself, um a couple of people I can mention from Buckingham Evangelical Church. But apart from that, uh I I'm looking to sort of see, how can we as a community gel together and bring these things together, rather than what happened in his case was because people didn't understand him and quite often they'd see him on the streets of Buckingham and they think, oh, he's drunk, but he actually had serious neurological problems because I was going back and forth to Amisham Hospital with him. And, you know, we just didn't have that network in place. I don't expect Buckingham churches to put that network in place. But we do have skilled people in Buckingham. We do have facilities like, you know, obviously the former Red Cross Centre. And, you know, if George hadn't been in Buckingham, those lovely gardens behind the centre as they look today wouldn't look anything like they do because he actually put most of the work into getting it. Admittedly, the church benefited off. But, you know, he was there doing it, so this is why I've come into the meeting. Black Lives Matter, his life mattered. I'm at the moment trying to get him home um to his mother. And I'm just looking for your support. I'm looking to make it people in Buckingham aware of that situation. Um I've got a thing that I did on the BBC Radio yesterday, which I'm happy to share with everybody if they want to hear it. And, you know, I know people like Ruth, who uh we, obviously we went to the same school and, you know, we just want to try and get something moving. So this sort of thing, this tragic thing doesn't reoccur. So that's where I'm coming from. I don't know if I've used up all my time. I don't know if any of you've got any questions. I'm I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you could throw at me. Um I'm all I'm all ears.
Okay, thank you, Stephen.
Okay, thank you.
I, myself, I am aware of all the problems surrounding um George and I know the centre helped him an awful lot.
Yeah, I was actually running the centre at the time.
I know you were, yeah. I had spoken to you.
Okay, I'm just trying to work out who's speaking to you.
Geraldine Collins.
Oh, Geraldine, yes, I know you. How are you?
I'm fine, you?
Oh, okay, I'm a bit, I'm very haggard because I haven't stopped working for the last week trying to raise funds, so. That's why I probably look quite tired.
Not at all. Anyway, thank you for that. We'll, I'm sure we'll have some, a lot of discussions around that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else got questions regarding George, anything else?
Christine has a hand.
Yeah, Christine.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask you, Stephen, um quite, how did this happen? I mean, I know that he fell through the net. But obviously people knew George's situation. I mean, do you think this was just that people didn't understand him when he asked for help? Or because he had an illness that was hidden from them? Because because he did like to go for a drink and so on? I just wonder how you think it happened?
How did it happen? Well.
Strain Clark.
Oh, I I recognize your voice, Christine. So yes, thank you. Um I think in George's case, the the situation was sort of compounded. I mean, um he was actually doing very well within the community, doing all sorts of stuff, but things went sort of downhill when he got banned from the library. And although he'd gone in there on several occasions with chocolates and flowers and things like that, it sort of, you know, it affected him in a way that his depression had se- was severely increased, so although he was being supported by various people locally, he spent more and more time at home because he just felt that he wasn't, you know, he wasn't welcome in the town and 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 obviously that led to him sort of being at home more and more often. And uh on the uh particular day, I saw him on the twenty eighth of February and I spoke to him again on the twenty ninth of February because we were in a leap year. But that's when he went off the radar. He didn't have anything in Buckingham where people were then calling round his house. People are aware of him. People knew him. People knew him really well. People saw him all the time. But people didn't actually go up and sort of, you know, do we need anything? How are you doing? And he he was always chatting to people locally, so, you know, it's just that lack of communication. I think that led to him sort of, you know, going home and there was just nobody checked up on him, nobody at all. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you.
Robin has a hand.
Yeah, um just, it's not a question, Stephen, it's an observation. I spoke to the officer who helps you and I. She sends her fondest regards to you, Sonia.
Oh, Sonia, okay, thank you.
Um she was very upset when she heard about Stephen. Though she was reassured that she did what she could when she could. And I was talking to her on up to other cases this month and and she's first rate and those officers are very valuable people in our community.
They are.
It's about gatekeeping them to them and 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 she did her best, but she was very upset and she wanted to send you her fondest and thank you for what you did.
I mean, I mean, the thing is that the problem we've got, I mean, this is something I discussed with Sonia some time back. I can, I won't name names because I know the people in Buckingham and I don't really want to name them publicly over YouTube. If people will want the names, I can give them quite happily later. But the modus operandi quite often is, well, we we don't want them in the town. It makes people feel awkward, so we're you know, alright, they're people of colour, they're people of mixed race, so we ship them out of town to places like, you know, um Lock Farm. Uh which is out on the on the Ring Road, you know, um is that the solution that Buckingham wants to be known for? That's my question.
Just to say, Stephen, I'll take these matters on with you after the meeting tomorrow.
Thank you.
I I think that's appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. That's all we have in the person in public session form, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. So we're now going to move on to bring the co-option of the town councillor forward to the next section. If everybody's in agreement with that.
Great.
So we have actually Rabina Ahmed first.
Yeah, hi, it's um.
It's her son, yes.
She wants to give her apologies for a a tooth extraction as well.
That's all right, give her our best wishes.
Yeah, I will, thank you.
If you want to carry on.
Yeah, so she gave me this speech. Thank you, everyone, for inviting me to this council meeting and giving me the opportunity to speak about why I would like to be a councillor. Unfortunately, I had my tooth removed today, so I cannot speak, but I hope this will make do. As I said in my statement, I have lived in the town since I was fourteen, attended the Royal Aston Grammar School. I've always lived on the Badgers Estate and I'm so glad that I do. My neighbours are so welcoming and friendly. I've worked in the town before and was lucky enough to raise my two children here. It was actually my eldest son who told me about this role as he likes to get involved with politics, as some of you may know. Although I haven't held a seat on the council before, my love for the town drove me to applying. When I speak to my friends and neighbours, we often end up talking about how the town can be improved and what the council can do to make the town better for the residents. I admire the culture of the town and if co-opted, I'd like to balance the history with the modern world. I'd also like to hear about the worries of the residents, represent younger people and those of ethnic minorities in the community. Once again, I would like to thank current councillors and staff of the town council for giving me and others here your time and opportunity to show what we can offer to the town.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we have next on our list is Nick Bailey.
Sorry, no, Mrs Mayor, are we going to ask questions of of the candidates one by one or all at the same time?
Um we were going to listen first and then ask questions at the end.
Okay, that's fine with me.
That's okay, yeah.
Great.
Okay, is Nick there to speak to us?
Yes, hello, good evening again.
Hi.
I'm sorry about that earlier mix-up. When I heard my name, I thought it was.
That's all right.
Okay, well, thanks very much indeed. I know there'll be lots of this this evening, but uh thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. As I said earlier, rather unusual circumstances. I'd much prefer to be in the same room with you, but nonetheless.
Absolutely, so would we.
Yeah. When thinking about this opportunity this evening, I made a list of what I felt were some of the important traits required in order to fulfil the role of an effective local councillor. Now, apologies for perhaps irritating what many of you already know. But an opportunity like this perhaps gives me, an outsider, a chance to voice some of the principles that I think are so vital in holding such an office. So the first one I thought of was integrity. It's really important that people of public office must avoid placing themselves perhaps under any obligation to people or organisations they might try to influence them or their work. They shouldn't take decisions in order to gain financial or personal gain. So I think integrity is very important and I believe that I am a man of integrity. I think I can be very objective about things. Coming from the world of education, I've often had to work in quite difficult circumstances. And you need to step back and look very carefully at the whole picture. I think it's also important that somebody who perhaps o- offers a role of leadership can be somebody who has strong principles themselves. And I think it's very important that whenever people see poor behaviour, they react to that and I don't feel frightened of hardworking. I think I'm very reliable and I'm trustworthy. In all the schools that I've worked in over the past thirty-two years, my energies and commitment to the young people in my care has never been questioned. And I've always succeeded in building very good relationships, both with parents, colleagues and governors. If successful this evening, I would endeavour to bring all these qualities to the forum which I'm assigned to. My particular skills lie in the leisure, sports, heritage and cultural sectors. And I believe that while arts and community are very important, they're also very easy perhaps to um be seen as really, well, are they that important? Nice to have, simply aimed at the well-to-do. But I think they're vital in terms of the community wellbeing and I believe they should touch the lives of everyone. I've got good practical skills in this field and I certainly think that I could contribute very effectively to the events that are managed by the council. So I really look forward to the opportunity, perhaps um speaking to you later on, to answer any questions that you might have. Thanks very much indeed.
Thank you. Alright. So next we have Sue Heatherington. Hi, Sue.
Hello. Good evening, councillors. Uh my name's Sue Heatherington. I've lived in Gorkap for two and a half years. I'd love to join you as a councillor. I'm really sorry that this vacancy arose due to the sad death of Derek Isham last December. Derek also left a big hole in the Gorkap Village Hall Management Committee, where he was chair of the trustees. The quorum of trustees had to be made up. So despite being relatively new to Gorkap, I volunteered. I'm still finding my feet as a new trustee, complicated, of course, by the Covid nineteen pandemic. I previously have lived in Wendover and during my time there, I served as a parish councillor. So I have experience and training from that role. I think I would have something to offer to any of the five committees, but perhaps the one that um is nearest to my heart would be to do with the environment committee. This would suit my interests and skills. As I mentioned on my written applications, I previously worked with volunteer teams on several sites around Buckingham. My other experience is lived experience. I worked full-time from the age of sixteen to just before age sixty, when a family tragedy necessitated my slightly early retirement. Since then, I've been enjoying travel and indulging my interests and and working on a range of volunteering um roles. I also have experience of setting up and leading a voluntary self-help group in relation to the family tragedy I mentioned. Thank you for considering me. I hope I have the pleasure of working with you for the good of Buckingham.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, um next we have Tom Humphries.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you all for your time. Um uh so at the town council, you have a unique and privileged uh the potential to make a real difference to people's lives. Uh this is the exact re- reason why I'm here tonight. Um a little bit about me, despite relocating from work in different areas throughout the UK and abroad, I inevitably always made it back to my hometown Buckingham. There's both the charm of the market town and the wonderful people who reside in it that solidified my decision to raise my own family here. In the town that I myself was fortunate enough to be brought up in. Uh as a chef by trade, I've saw opportunities uh with some of the most competitive kitchens um in the UK and abroad in Dubai. Uh but after ten years in the kitchens, I decided I wanted to make a real difference. Uh and use my knowledge and skills to educate children on healthy eating and the importance of nutrition. I'm currently an executive chef for a company which are based in schools up and down the country. Uh and we provide healthy and exciting meals to children. Uh I teach cooking classes as well to students. Um with the intention of helping the children uh to understand the importance of what we put into our bodies. Uh I've always been passionate about helping to enrich the lives of those around me. And I believe that I can do this more effectively by being a town councillor. Um in order to understand and represent the local views and priorities, uh it would be imperative for me to build strong relationships and encourage local people to make their views known. Um I believe that my communication and engagement will make an effective town councillor. I'm hoping due to my age, I can appeal to and encourage the younger generations to have more of a voice when it comes to what goes on in the town, which we all love. I want to provide a bridge between the community and the council. Becoming a councillor, I understand that I'm committing to keeping the local residents informed about the issues that affect them and work collaboratively with both the community and council to generate ideas, implement solutions and resolve issues raised by the community. I believe I already embody the seven principles of public life which require of a town councillor. Oh, sorry. Um uh which are selflessness, integrity, objectivity, accountability, openness, honesty and leadership. Um and then my main focus uh with the effects obviously of Covid nineteen and the impact that this has already had and will continue to have on our town and the local businesses within, ensuring that that, the community, I think, is imperative that we get people supporting our businesses. Uh mostly, I think it'd be the company themselves with us and using our help. Um together, we would stand stronger and in turn achieve great things. The Economic Development Working Group, um which uh I heard has had a a good start already. But I'd love to fully support this and I think having owned and worked in a plethora of businesses uh in this town, my credentials would fully support it. Um thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so next we have Attakuni.
Yes, I'm good evening. Um I would like to, good evening, thank you very much. I would like to thank the council for this opportunity um to make a brief verbal presentation in support of my application for the role of councillor for Buckingham Town Council. Um I must also extend my deepest condolences to the family of councillor Derek Islam, um who I believe served Buckingham for thirty-two years. Um I hope his family receives the much-needed peace to bear this loss. When I sought my wife's and daughter's permission and approval to run for this post, the question they asked me was why? Um and I would hope that I can convince this panel um as to why they should give me that opportunity. My personal values um include both professionalism, integrity, passion, accountability and excellence. Um my key strengths will be my age, my profession and also my passion for Buckingham. Whilst I'm not born and bred in Buckingham, I moved back to Buckingham, um because this is where I met my wife. We both fell in love in Buckingham and we then decided that we would then bring up our kids and retire here. Um I have volunteered for several services within the town and I hope this will be another opportunity to volunteer for more. With regards to proposals or ideas I would have with regards to being a councillor, um I would first start by also applauding um the pending motion, which I saw on the agenda um by councillor Strain Clark. Um I I do applaud the foresight in that and support the noble intentions behind it. But the key problem that I think Buckingham would face um in the near future would be Covid nineteen. Um I have also seen um the steps or the efforts of the council on the website, um by trying to put together a platform for opportunities for suggestions to be put forward. Um I would commend that and also recommend things like setting up a business and town councillors committee. Um and also, if possible, holding town council meetings with residents, uh which would also imbibe the social distancing requirements. Um I'm someone who is very strong on education, being a teacher and also a lawyer. Um with my administrative strengths, um I have functioned as a partner in various, in the law firm and various other business opportunities. And I would be prepared to sacrifice my time and make myself available to work with all the councillors um on the Buckingham Town Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, so lastly, not least, is Sashat.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Because I was having some problem with my wifi.
Yes, we can hear you.
Very good, wow. First of all, I find that I'm new to this town. I have moved in last September because my son is studying at Stow and he's my only child. Okay, and I'm sixty plus, so it's very important that I spend as much time as possible with my son. And this is a wonderful town and thus is why I've decided to uh give a wonderful education to my son at Stow, right? I've did, lived in London all my life, so I'm familiar with the issues and challenges that councils faces in in Greater London, right? And most of the issues have been um raised by all the other candidates and they are well qualified for the for the for the to become a councillor, but uh I can, all I can say is that I've held a senior management position. And and I I can contribute to that and I have run charities in in uh in a third world country, so I'm quite familiar with the homeless crisis and the other problems and Covid. And environment plays a major issue and business is something we have to look into and. And another thing I felt very much, having to commute between London and Buckingham that transportation link is not as good as it should be. Perhaps you can also consider having the rail connection to Buckingham and Winslow. Right, and other, other issues that we can address. Okay, and I'm happy to answer any question that anyone would like to put to me later on. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, so that's everyone we have listened to. So if any of the councillors want to ask any particular questions for the candidates, please. I can't see everybody at the moment.
So Mike and Robin, I can see with hands up.
Okay, it's Mike first, Mike.
Thank you madam mayor. I would just like to ask our candidates there, why they've, they're applying now? Why they hadn't considered or what reason didn't they stand for election when there was an opportunity to do so?
What's that?
At first, if you'd like. Um, I, I think now I'm in a, in a place in my, where I feel I'd be able to give the possible, so I think it's more timing with me than very well. So that's why really, it's something I've always wanted to do, but I think now, now is the, the most fitting time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, could I come in there please?
So that's Nick and Sue's got a hand.
Yes, sorry, beg your pardon, yes, please. Exactly the same as the, as the previous chat, timing. I know timing is, is never easy. But having retired this summer, I'm going to have time on my hands and it's something that I want to use effectively. I've been a resident of the town for nearly 30 years. I've seen it grow, it will no doubt grow considerably over the next 10, 15 years. And I feel that it's a good opportunity now, so I would love to have had a chance in the past. But unfortunately, my professional commitments just made that the amount of time that I felt was important. I just couldn't give it, now I can.
Okay, thank you.
And Sue had a hand up.
Sue.
Yes, um. I, I have only lived here for two and a half years and I spent quite a considerable time when I first got here, getting settled in. In fact, I hated it when I first came here. I put the house on the market within a week of moving in. I was incredibly unsettled, but then I sorted myself out. I actually went on a CBT course and got my head straightened out and now I'm ready to go.
Thank you.
Attakuni has a hand.
Sorry. Did you say Robin?
No, Attakuni.
Okay. I don't know what's happened to my screen at the moment.
Yeah.
Yeah, carry on.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yes, I had, actually had planned to run for the county council before the suspension due to Covid-19. So I'd early decided that I wanted to play an active role in Buckingham. And I saw this as another opportunity to start playing that role and that's why I applied for this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And Sajid.
And Sajid.
Right, well, I've moved in last September, so obviously the election took place earlier than that. And I think that if I, I can just contribute by being somebody who's from, who's an outsider and have a fresh look at how things are done instead of the council, right?
Okay, thank you.
Could, could I just give my answer on behalf of my mum?
Yes, certainly.
She wrote it down on a piece of paper. She feels that there wasn't, she didn't really know that there was a need for representation of the ethnic minority and coloured community of Buckingham and after doing school runs and working in and around the town, it's opened her eyes about how much this community needs representation on the council.
Okay, thank you. Did you say Robin wanted to ask a question Paul?
Councillor Hirons and councillor Stutbury and councillor Harvey also has a hand now.
Okay, councillor Stutbury. Where is he?
I'm here, my dear. Firstly, can I thank all the candidates for coming forward and being brave enough to put themselves in this unusual situation of doing it on Zoom? It can't be easy. And we just congratulate you for being brave enough to do that. What I would ask is Buckingham's a very small community, though it's a very active community. Was there any council or people who supported you towards this office? Did anybody say this is something you should do? And I note that one of the candidates said that he had been a candidate or was going to be a candidate in the county council elections, which is interesting. And what do you know about the workings of the town council, its responsibilities and its limits of its role? And the events we do, plus the parks and stuff that we fortunately run and the areas of local planning, it's quite a lot, but it's just to find out what you know about us. Because there is a limit to what the town council can achieve against the backdrop of the Buckinghamshire Council. It's just limited representation. I hope that's not too arguous, it's the round, round the Robins or question from a Robin. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Who would like to answer that first?
Yeah, I can, I think again, Tom here. I think going in, so initially having a first, I'm gonna say Mr. And he actually very kindly ran through a lot about, you know, what can be achievable and what cannot, giving realistic timelines of, you know, if you expect to change something or come in and do something in a year or even two years, you know, that's, that's not really what you can do per se, it's more, you know, if you're looking to achieve something over a sort of longer time and the goal's there. So, but yeah, as I said, he extensively went into the roles and the different areas as each one, so yeah, I believe after, after that, I'm quite well versed in it.
Yes, I could, can I answer now please Paul?
Geraldine's chairing.
Yes, certainly.
I beg, beg your pardon Geraldine.
All right.
Yes, as I said earlier, I've been a resident of the town since 1991. And as I said, I've seen it grow. All three of my children who are now in their twenties have all brought up and educated in the area. I've been actively involved in a variety of things related in the town. I'm a great supporter of what the town councillor does. I fully appreciate that they have their limits. But I think that at this time particularly, I know there are no words like unprecedented and are banded around a lot, but we are living in a world that is going to be changed unbelievably in the next year or two. And it's an opportunity, I think, for everybody, whether I'm elected onto the council or not. I don't think it's going to necessarily stop me from being active in my local town. Because I think for too long, people will often sit back and think, well, what's it to do with me? Well, I think it's got everything to do with everybody. And I think it's important that if I can make a contribution through, through any of your forums, then great. If not, it's not going to stop me from necessarily becoming involved. And I think it's a chance now to use this time of disruption to try and think again about what do we deliver? What is our role? What can we do to make the town and the community that we all live in a better place for everyone? And I don't want to necessarily be particularly contentious, but I think it's very important that irrespective of where we come from, our race, our religion, our colour, we should all be citizens of the town. And I think that I can offer a lot in my views and my ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have anyone else who wants to answer that?
Sue, Sue, which is speaking.
I'll have a go.
And Attakuni.
Okay, Sue.
I, I really, I really have, I don't have a good idea of all of the things you're involved in. I only know from my lived experience on the other side and I just feel that we're all very good at criticizing what, what are they doing about things? Well, sometimes I think that they have to be us. So I'm just giving, doing my bit, I think.
Okay, thank you.
And could I?
Attakuni, oh and Sajid.
Sorry, you said Attakuni?
Yes, thank you very much. So I would not act like I'm oblivious to the, shall I say encouragement or path between the unitary government and the town councils all over. But I think the limitations or the perceived limitations will come from the council itself. So if, for example, we take our position as representing the residents, as the voice of the residents, then we can always present the residents' positions to the councils, the county council or whatever other county council or Buckinghamshire County Council, yes. With regards to the powers of the council, I know about the different committees. I believe my expertise will be well used in committees like the resource committee and also the planning committee. I also would like to say that having, I don't have the vast amount of knowledge or intellect or experience as existing councillors, because this will be my first time. So I'll need to learn from councillors that aren't currently on the council and I look forward to that. And I think I could also bring a fresh perspective when taking, or when having discussions or deliberations on issues that affect Buckingham or Buckingham, the Buckingham community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sajad had a hand.
Sajad.
Yes, I just want to point out that, you know, whoever gets elected is going to be elected for only one year, right? So not an awful lot of contribution can be expected of that person. The only thing that person can do is work with the existing councillors, right? And try to bring in fresh inputs, suggestions and fresh ideas if, and, and work along with the other councillors, right? And that is, that is all that can be achieved within one year, right? And I did have a constructive discussion with the town clerk. And we have lived here and councils are, Buckingham council is no different from the other councils up and down the country. And we're in, if a council is to operate and make contribution and represent the residents, the best way they can do is to put politics aside and, and put the interest of the residents first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, could I go next, please?
Yes, certainly.
Yeah, my mum, she does know what the town council does and what the, what's the difference between the town council and the unitary authority now. And she really wants to get involved with the new, with the committees, even if it is for one year, bringing a new voice and new ideas to the table. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So Geraldine, we have councillors Harvey and Hirons. I don't know if you want to take both questions and then get answers to do at the same time or?
Yeah, sure. Who was first?
Councillor Hirons first, then councillor Harvey.
Councillor Hirons.
Yes, it's a very simple question, but we've had various other people who've come, have been quoted on as casual vacancies is the word for it. And they've all given up because they haven't been prepared to do it Monday after Monday after Monday, which is when we hold their meetings. They've just found it too difficult, that their other life, work, their family just doesn't enable them to do it. And unfortunately, one of the things we are looking for is someone who can turn up, make their contribution every week. And I'd like to now ask each one of the people, are they prepared to it every week?
Okay, thank you Paul.
I'll go first, because my answer is probably going to be the shortest.
Okay.
Yes.
We do realise there will be some times when people can't turn up.
We are a small family. Myself, my wife and my son and he is, as I said, he's attending at Stowe and they finish late. So I can attend all the meetings every Monday, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if that's okay. Yeah, I think that, like definitely, I think turning up is the easy part. I think is what follows that, which might be a bit harder, but that's exactly why I applied is commitment is, is the key, I feel, so yeah, I'll definitely, you know.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I say please Geraldine, Nick speaking?
Certainly.
Yes, I think that I wouldn't have applied if I had not known the commitment. I think that would be dishonest and I don't think it's very fair on you and your fellow colleagues or on the residents of the town. I think if I'm making a commitment, then I would stick to that commitment and give it my all. So yes, I will be there.
Thank you.
Can I go next, it's Sue.
Yes, certainly Sue.
Yes, I, I'll stick with the knitting, yes, there's not a lot else going on at the moment. No, I would never have applied otherwise. I mean, I would never have applied if I hadn't meant to stick with it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Could I go next?
Yeah, sure.
Currently, my mum's not working and now her children are at an age that we don't have to be dependent on her so much. She can put her full heart and soul and commitment into the role. And she wouldn't have applied if she knew, if she just wanted the title and not come to any of the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Attakuni has a hand.
Attakuni?
Thank you, I am committed. I have my full family's support. I'm in control of my time and have, I'm willing to dedicate my Mondays at 7pm and any other time the council needs me to attend all meetings and all affairs related to Buckingham Town Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
So I think it was councillor Harvey's question now.
Councillor Harvey?
Yeah, most of my questions have already been asked by fellow councillors, so I'll ask a different kind of one. I guess I'd be interested to know from each of the candidates and thanks very much for coming along this evening to this rather curious job interview, as it were. I would like to know, what are your concerns about becoming a town councillor? What are the things that you, you're worried about, about taking on the role? I guess I'm looking for you to, I don't know, disclose a bit about yourself to us so we can understand you more as a whole person.
Okay. If we go first.
Ah, yeah, I'll go. I think that there's not much that I would worry. I think maybe it might be disheartening to not achieve goals or things that I might have in my mind, which I'd like to. I think that would be the only sort of downside, so to speak, of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Nick, do you want to go next?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't have any particular fears about it. In fact, rather the opposite, I think it's quite, it's very exciting. I think potentially very exciting. I think, I think you realise, one, you have to put yourself, you know, out there. You have to be involved. There's no point in just being a faceless person behind the committee. I think it's important that you support events in the town. I think it's important that one, you know, puts the best foot forward and gets involved. And I've certainly done that irrespective of whether I'm a councillor or not. So I'm a great supporter of the town. And as I say, I've been here many years and I think I will continue to be here for several years. This is my home and it's somewhere that I feel proud to call my home. So no, I don't have any particular fears about it at all. In fact, it's an opportunity that I think is, would be ideal for me. So thank you.
Thank you. And Sue, do you want to go next?
Yes, well, I hadn't really thought of any particular concerns. If I'd known how tough all this was going to be, I think I'd have. It can only get easier after this, can't it?
Absolutely. It's hard doing it on these things.
As it's and.
Okay. Sorry. Did you say?
Yes, I think one of the major concerns any new councillor would have is elimination in powers. I am aware of a little bit of it, maybe not in practice, but theoretically. So I can assume that the practical realities might be slightly different, but I can assure you that professionally I am prepared to deal with that and I can always adjust. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sajad?
Yeah, when you take a challenge or a new job or a new business, right? No matter how confident you are, there's always that fear factor working the background, right? And I think the, the fear that I will have, if I can use the word fear, because that's come up in the discussion, is that not to fail the council members, not to fail the residents of the town, right? And, and most important thing these days is that one must have total commitment, love and affection. And that can help achieve and overcome the fear factor.
Okay, thank you. And Rabina next?
Yeah, she thinks that she doesn't have many concerns, but it may be a bit disheartening when you don't achieve a goal or an expectation of a resident or a neighbour. But she wants to still have, have a go and put the heart and soul into the role of councillor.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other councillors that want to ask any questions before we move on to the voting? I can't see anybody with their hands up.
I can't see any hands.
I think we should just thank them for all the efforts they put in tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you for being brave and coming on to the Zoom meeting.
Not, not a natural way of doing things.
No, not ideal at all. Thank you, everybody. So we shall now move on to voting.
Councillor Ralph has his hand. Councillor Ralph has a hand.
Okay, sorry, councillor Ralph.
Yes, I just wondered where Andrew Schaefer got to.
She contacted us and decided to withdraw.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay. All right. Paul, do you want to explain the voting?
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll, Geraldine will call out each of the candidates and councillors will vote for them in the order that they're listed on. The successful candidate needs to have a majority of councillors vote for them. So if on the first round of voting that doesn't happen, then the candidate with the least votes will be removed and then we'll vote again. And we'll keep doing that until the, until one of the candidates has a majority. So we have 16 councillors, that means they have to have nine votes to have the majority. If we get to a situation where there's some form of tie, it's always the mayor votes with everybody else to start with, but the mayor also has a second casting vote in any tie situation. So that is the thing which we look to unlock any difficulties. Councillor Smith has a question.
Okay, councillor Smith?
I'm just wondering whether this could be a recorded vote, please? Or at the very least, the names of those voting called out, because we can't all see everybody at once on.
No, we can't.
My favour of a recorded vote.
Okay. I'd second that.
Okay. Because I can't see everybody either, I can only see a few at the moment, so. Right, shall we make a start? So we have Rabina Ahmed first. Can we all vote in favour of Rabina?
So councillor Harvey, councillor Ralph, councillor Smith, councillor Strain Clark, Gatesley, Stutchbury, Bloomfield. I think that's everyone. I make that seven votes.
Okay. And, sorry, Nick Bailey. Can we have a show of hands for Nick, please?
Councillor Try. I think that's one vote.
Okay, thank you. And Sue Heatherington's next.
Councillors O'Donoghue and Mahi. That's it.
Okay, and Tom Humphries?
Councillors Hirons, P Collins. I think that's it, two.
Okay. And next we have Adekunle.
Councillors Cole, Newell and Mordu. And O'Donoghue.
Okay. And next we have Sajid.
Lisa voting twice then?
Sorry?
Was that Lisa voting twice?
Yeah, you got Lisa down twice. I think her hand was just up in the air, next to her hair, like it is now.
Yeah, because she was down for Sue.
Yeah.
Okay, right, so can we just do, just double check that one again then, please? Sorry, everyone.
So Adekunle?
So that was councillor Cole, councillor Newell.
Councillor Mordu.
Councillor Mordu.
Mordu, we said.
So that's three votes.
Okay.
Is the mayor going to vote on anything? Or she's forgotten about herself?
Cheeky.
We haven't finished.
Are we okay? Apologies.
We've got Sajad next. And I can't see anybody at all.
So that's G Collins.
Lisa, keep your hand down.
So that's just G Collins, so that's one vote. And I make that a total of 16 votes.
Six votes altogether.
Okay, have we got everybody?
So I make, so that's everybody voted for, which gives Rabina Ahmed seven. We've got two people with one vote, which are Nick Bailey and Sajad. So the mayor then needs to make a cast for one of those. And then the one who the mayor doesn't vote for doesn't progress. Sorry, Geraldine.
That's all right. Okay, I shall go with Sajad.
Okay, so in that case, apologies, Nick is then removed. So now we start back at the beginning.
Okay, so we have Rabina again.
So votes for Rabina this time, please. Councillors Harvey, Ralph, Smith, Strain Clark, Gatesley, Stutchbury, Bloomfield. I make, so that's seven.
Seven. Okay, and for, sorry, next we have Sue Heatherington.
So councillor O'Donoghue, Mahi. I think it's those two.
Okay.
Martin.
Brian.
And Try.
Oh, sorry, and Try. I apologise, I missed your hand, Martin. That's three for Sue Heatherington. Okay.
And next is Tom Humphries.
P Collins, Hirons. And they are the only two.
And Adekunle?
Councillors Cole, Newell and Mordu.
And Sajad. Wesley.
Okay, so that's only one vote for Sajad, so Sajad is now removed.
Okay.
Vote again.
So we're back to Rabina again.
So councillors Harvey, Ralph, Smith, Strain Clark, Gatesley, Bloomfield, Stutchbury, which I make seven.
Okay. And next we have Sue Heatherington.
Councillors O'Donoghue, Mahi and Try.
Me.
I apologise, and G Collins, that's four.
And Tom Humphries is next.
Councillors P Collins and. I make that two.
Oh, go away. I've gone out of the meeting, how can I get back in?
You're still there.
You're still there, we can hear you.
Still there.
Hey, I've got a screen with Zoom on it.
Yeah, you're there.
Just minimize it, just minimize it.
It just says post attendee. Right, where were we? On Tom Humphries, we were on.
No, Tom Humphries has two.
Two. And Adekunle?
So votes for Adekunle, I make councillor Cole, Newell and Mordu.
Okay.
Which is three.
That's the 16.
Yeah. So Tom Humphries has the least votes and is now removed.
Okay.
So we go back to the beginning again.
So back to Rabina again.
So councillors Harvey, Ralph, Smith, Strain Clark, Gatesley, Bloomfield and P Collins, which I make seven. Oh, Stutchbury, eight.
Okay. Eight. All right, so we're back to Sue Heatherington again.
Councillors G Collins, O'Donoghue, Try, Mahi. So that is four.
Four. Okay, and Adekunle?
Councillors Cole, Newell, Hirons and Mordu. That is four.
And that's the 16.
So that's the 16. So there are, so Sue Heatherington and Adekunle both have four votes. So mayor, it's for you to let a casting vote for one of those two.
Right, okay. Well, I'll have to stick with Sue.
Okay, so that's five votes for Sue Heatherington then, and Adekunle is removed.
The last one.
So final vote between Rabina Ahmed and Sue Heatherington.
Okay, so we're back to Rabina.
Councillors Ralph, Smith, Strain Clark, Gatesley, Bloomfield, Cole, Newell and Hirons, that's, and Stutchbury.
And Harvey.
Let me, let me, let me read that again to make sure I've got it absolutely right. Councillors Harvey, Ralph, Smith, Strain Clark, Gatesley, Bloomfield, Cole, Newell, Hirons and Stutchbury.
I think I've seen.
I make that 10. So Sue Heatherington?
Sue Heatherington.
Councillors G Collins, O'Donoghue, Try, Mahi, you and P Collins, which is six. Successful candidate is Rabina Ahmed.
Okay.
Thank you everyone so much. She says thank you so much and she really wants to commit to this role so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to everybody else.
Madam Mayor, could we say something she can get her teeth into?
Please don't.
Can we, can we thank her some for representing her?
Yes. And we will have the elections next year, so everybody can still apply to join us then.
Congratulations to Rabina. Congratulations to Rabina and see you next election.
Thank you.
Wanted to thank all the candidates for going through this and standing and going through, being questioned by councillors. Thank you.
I agree. It's not easy.
Not easy at all.
It's not ideal, it's not a perfect situation in an imperfect world, I'm afraid. Thank you for having us. Thank you, bye bye.
Bye bye.
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 Bye, thank you.
So councillors, we have the issue now that Rabina can now take part in the rest of the meeting as a councillor. Providing, providing that you're happy for her contributions to carry on as they are as councillor, which will include voting, you're happy for that, because her son, while she's online and can't contribute. Councillor Harvey has a hand.
Okay, councillor Harvey?
I would say that if we've elected Rabina on the basis of her son acting as interlocutor, interlocutor, or whatever the word is, then I think we should be able to carry on. Obviously, these are unusual circumstances and obviously we look forward to Rabina finding her voice again. But given that we've got to this point without her saying a thing, except through her son, then I don't see why we can't carry on in that same spirit. It seems a decent thing to do.
Yeah.
I doubt if it's legal. Well, I guess I signed a bit of paper. What about signing the documents you have to do?
No, so councillors have to sign the declaration after, after the meeting or before the next meeting, but they can't, they can take part in this meeting without signing, but they have to sign it after this meeting or after the next meeting to take part in the next meeting. It's only the chairman who has to sign it at the start of each year when they elected a chair during the meeting.
There it is.
There it is.
Okay.
So I propose we move into the meeting.
Good idea, Robin.
Absolutely. So we shall move, sorry, we shall move on to item three. We've got to receive the minutes and confirm the recommendations of the full council meeting, which is the annual statutory meeting on the 11th of May. And confirm the recommendations of the full council meeting, which is the annual statutory meeting on the 11th of May. And for council also. I don't think we have any recommendations for that, have we?
No, in terms of reference, it's a separate item.
Just, yeah, yeah. So is everybody happy with those? Anybody, any questions? No. So we shall move on to item four, the interim minutes from the 22nd of June.
Agreed.
Agreed. And item five, the planning committee to receive the minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to put forward the 18th of May, 1st of June and 22nd of June if members who attended are happy to agree those.
Yeah, agreed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So item six is our town centre and events committee.
I'll present the first return event of the event meeting. Those will be agreed at the committee. They're only to note here.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Agreed to know.
What I mean, Terry, is they'll be agreed at committee as a previous chairman, you know.
Item seven, the environment committee.
Yeah, I'd like to present the environment committee minutes to you again, which will be agreed by our next committee meeting. And there are no resolutions in the recommendations. Thank you.
And item eight, the resources committee.
Yeah, happy to present the draft minutes of the resources meeting held on the 29th of June. There are no recommendations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Agreed.
Okay, so we move on to item nine, the economic development working group.
Similarly, happy to present these for you to note.
Thank you, Mike.
Could we just say thank you for the work that they've been doing? It's been quite inspiring what they've been doing.
Very nice of you to say so, Robin. Thank you. I thought you'd remember.
I have other meetings, as you know.
All right, so now we go swiftly on to item 11, which are these terms of reference. So we've all got the appendixes for those. So firstly is the planning committee. Anything from those on anybody?
Yeah.
Yes, Paul?
Yeah, it looks to me like point 10 and point 11 are more or less identical.
Where are we looking?
Yeah, it says all meetings and then all business.
Yeah.
They could be combined, couldn't they?
They could, yeah. So everybody happy with that if we combine those two?
Agreed.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else further on those? Right. Okay, so next we have the terms to review and agree terms of reference for town centre and events.
These are slightly amended, Chairman, from what they were, and the committee members. Discusses endlessly, so I hope that these are adequate for what the committee agreed.
Okay, yeah.
Councillor Gatesley.
Councillor Gatesley.
Yeah, just, thank you. Just a typo really. We've got an old goal that's crept in. In 10.14 under terrorist information centre. And I do urge everybody to, because it obviously doesn't throw up in a spell check. And I think I noticed it in a set of minutes that came before this group, but I didn't make a note of where it was. So please, can I urge everybody to make sure we have an old jail and not an old goal?
Can I thank you, Margaret? I didn't spot that. Can I thank you for that?
Chairman, can I also suggest that councillor Hirons suggested combining eight and nine in the previous terms of reference? If we're going to do that, would it be appropriate to do that for all terms of reference as that currently appears in all of them?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, everybody agree with that. Yeah, that seems very sensible.
Councillor Cole has his hand.
Councillor Cole.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'm just looking at the terms of reference. We've just passed in planning. The fact that we're now going to have chairman, not chair or chairperson. This committee is going to have a chair stroke chairman. The next two committees will as well. It's only planning and economic development working group that have decided to call their leader chairman. Surely, for the sake of the consistency, all chair people should be called chairman. As we said at the planning committee when we decided this, it's not a person, it's a post.
It's a post, yeah, I agree with that.
I agree with you.
Councillors Strain Clark, Harvey, Mordu and.
Sorry.
So Strain Clark, Mordu and Harvey.
Thank you. I just, I just can't agree with that. I know it's become the name of a post. But that's because of, you know, centuries or, you know, a long time, it's always been men have been the councillors and always been men in the chair. And I think we've reached the stage now that we can just easily call the chairperson chair. I think that, you know, that's on all these committees would be my preference.
So we have. Gatesley.
Councillor Gatesley.
I agree with councillor Strain Clark. Absolutely. We shouldn't be using that term in the 21st century. We need to use inclusive language, not sexist language.
And councillor Mordu, I think, was next.
Councillor Mordu.
Chairman is not a sexist term. It is a post. After all, you don't have yo persons of the guard, do you? And you don't say man person when you're referring to the future of mankind. At the end of the day, it's up to the person fulfilling the role to make the choice. It's not up to council to dictate. I remember one person who was chair of the committee. And she did not want to be referred to as a piece of furniture.
That was me.
I'm not, no, it wasn't you. She was, it was well before your time, Geraldine. It was a person and she wanted to be called chairman. But that's her prerogative. And I would support anybody, whether they want to be a chairperson, a chairman or just a chair. It's the individual's right. When they're in a position of authority to choose. I don't think it has to be a standard term throughout the council. Yeah, I agree.
Harvey, I think, was next.
Councillor Harvey.
So just taking a moment. I think we reached a compromise with this some while ago where we had chair slash chairman. I appreciate people's views about chairman. I don't happen to agree with them. But I will, I think it would be unreasonable to insist that all chairs of committees are called chairman. But especially if the person concerned does not want to be called a chairman, be they male or female. The easy solution to this is simply stick with what we've agreed in the past to go chair slash chairman and not insist upon one or the other. I would personally prefer we all refer to all chairs, but I appreciate others on the council don't want that. But to actually somehow enforce chairman on people who absolutely are fundamentally. At a very deep level opposed to the use of that term, I think would be unfair and is not in fitting with how we normally run this council, which is usually as a consensual basis. So I think chair slash chairman is the best way forward. It's consensual and it reaches all the parts of the people on this committee, on this council.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I had councillor Newell and then councillor Stutchbury.
Just lost my screen again.
We can see, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with the answer.
Okay.
So we've frozen and coming back hopefully.
Well, it's on. It just put post attendee on my screen.
Yeah, I disappeared off there, but it's connected me again. I just wanted to support the words of councillor Gatesley and councillor Strain Clark. I note that councillor Cole talked about the terms of reference that were on there because they're the ones that have been amended. We've not amended environment and we've certainly always been able to. Call the chair chair. And I do remember us having the arguments before when John. Said we should have the chance to be called what we wanted to be, whether chair or chairman. Although personally, I'd prefer we are all chairs because that's what school governing boards do in Buckinghamshire. And even though we have some very old fashioned, some old fashioned chairs of governors. We don't have a problem with them all being called chairs.
I had councillor Stutchbury next and then.
Councillor Stutchbury.
I'd like to make a proposal. We've got a very, we've had a very long evening and we've got to this point. And we've had a new councillor join us tonight and we're discussing the name and title of something. Could we perhaps suggest that this isn't the evening to do this now? And we can easily discuss this at another meeting and come to a conclusion because it's not, is that the. Doing us any credit. And I think we should recognise there is a difference in this and have a discussion about that separately. I think doing it on every committee, we could repeat this on every committee when the terms of reference come forth tonight. And we could be going in a loop with this. So I would suggest with the guidance of the mayor and the town clerk. That we agree if there's any other things on the terms of reference. And we bring this back to a suitable committee, probably. Resources or something, just to discuss it, so that we have a sensible discussion about the item rather than back this around now. I don't really think it's doing us any good. I think we need to have a proper discussion about it and a settled way forward.
Agreed. That.
Councillor Hirons.
I'll second what councillor Stutchbury's idea.
I agree to that as well.
Is that okay with you, Paul?
It's up to councillors. Councillor O'Donoghue has a hand up.
Councillor O'Donoghue.
Thank you. We have already discussed this on planning and I said that I didn't mind being called chairman because I take on Mark's point that it's a position. And that to me is fine, but I wanted to throw another one out there. For those that don't want to be called chairman, how about madam chair? That's quite nice, I think. So, yeah, me done.
I definitely don't want to be called madam.
Could we not just adopt the chair chairman idea?
I just made a proposal which somebody seconded, is that we take this to another meeting. Can I propose we move to a vote on that? If that's not agreed, can we then return back to the conversation?
Okay, who's in favour of that motion? I can't see anybody at all.
I'm going to call out names so I'm not missing anything. So in fact, so we've got councillors Harvey, Ralph, O'Donoghue, Bloomfield. Cole, Hirons, Stutchbury, Newell, which I make eight.
Can everyone turn their mics on mute, please? Because I'm hearing somebody's TV in the background. Yeah, I don't know where it's coming from. Oh, sorry, it's Lick and Wanderers. One nil up. Oh.
Yeah, I was going to tell you that, Paddy.
I forgot that was on. Somebody mentioned the vote. I wasn't expecting a vote at this point. I was watching the TV. There you go.
Flap his hand. Right, so how many did we have?
That was eight votes in favour. Do we have any abstentions? Councillor Smith and Try abstaining.
Well, Paul.
Oh.
That's been carried, Paul.
Are you going to take the vote against?
No, because it was eight. Okay.
It was the wrong order. It should be four against then abstentions. The order should be in.
One nil up, Paddy.
Right, so that's eight four.
Four abstentions, you said.
No, no, eight votes for the motion.
Eight four, okay.
So if we take against then, to be clear. Those against the motion are Strain Clark, Gatesley, P Collins. Which is three.
Four.
Sorry, and G Collins. That's four. And then abstentions.
Well, Andy Mahi.
Andy Mahi was against as well, so five. Abstentions. Councillor Smith. Is abstaining. So the motion is then carried.
And just leave that to the mayor and the town clerk to sort out the appropriate meeting to bring that to.
Yeah, okay. All right, so did we get to the economic development group? I can't think now.
No, we got to resources.
We got to resources. So now we're on 11.4, the terms of reference for the economic development working group.
No, we hadn't agreed the resources one.
Uh, had we not?
No.
Okay. Resources then, back to.
And I move that we do.
Yes, please. Anybody, any questions on that?
Seconded.
No, I think you made a good job of them, Mike.
Good. Okay, 11.4, the terms of reference for the economic development working group.
Move we accept.
Thank you. Agreed, okay, good.
May I ask a question, please?
You may.
We've just agreed them. Move next item, please.
Yeah, you're very quick, Robin. Throughout all of these terms of reference, Paul, could you just remind me that in the overall terms of reference, we have a way of the chairman voting. Casting a vote, a casting vote. Because none of these have them in, and I believe that will be in the overall terms of reference.
That's correct, because they all refer to doing things in line with standing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pete, now.
Okay, we shall move on to item 12 to receive and question reports from the district and county councillors. Have we got anybody with anything tonight?
May I just apologise? That should obviously say Buckinghamshire councillors.
It should, yes.
Councillors, that's a clerical error, but which will not remain again. My bad.
Can you tell me?
Councillor Mordu.
Thank you.
I got in touch with the chairman of planning and the director concerned. I know that Buckingham Town Council and parishes have a problem with the current representation and the time allocated for them. Which is within the constitution. There is a chairman's meeting on Wednesday, which the matter will be raised. And apart from that, I have, because I'm on the standard committee. I've asked that the whole question of the constitution be reviewed at one of the forthcoming standards meetings as part of the work. Programme, which it can be discussed together with any other items to do with the constitution. Apart from that, it's been a normal round of Zoom meetings. Yesterday was six hours on Zoom. And today it's about four hours. I don't fancy doing that again.
Wow. Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Councillor Stutchbury has his hand.
Councillor Stutchbury, I can't see him.
I can see you. I've, just for information, I've attended far authority meetings, I've attended children's services and education audit. And I've attended meetings in regard to planning. And I recently attended the community board meeting, the first one. And I have placed a motion on the council for Wednesday, which is seeking them to go out and do a proper consultation with parishes. To bring back the findings of the consultation on the changes to the planning constitution before 2021. And I also attended the planning meeting when I were, our. A planning meeting offline, where I will say the chairman of the North Spanish Committee is supporting councillor Mordu's view. Was very minded to the fact that three minutes probably wasn't enough in his mind to have a successful liberation of applications. And we discussed the niceties of that. And I'm pleased that's going to a future meeting and I'm pleased that they're going to look at the constitution. But we are in a falling situation with that, so we do. But we are in a falling situation with that, so we do need to push on. The other element is, I have dealt with a couple of really serious housing cases this month and I'm working on other elements to do with children's services only today. And it is becoming quite busy and I will say that it's quite confusing, all these meetings on Microsoft Teams, but I rather do like having the discussion before the meeting with the officers and the discussion after the meeting, because you have a fuller round of meeting. And I find it quite inhibiting as it is. I can't work as hard as I want to.
Thank you. Is that everyone on there?
Yeah, councillor Mills was with us, but he's left the meeting.
Okay. All right, we shall move on to item 14, this major planning application.
So councillors would have seen the report from Catherine, who's just appeared on the screen as if by magic. Obviously happy to take questions and comments.
Sorry, what happened to item 13, the action list?
Oh. Sorry, John, I missed it. Okay, sorry, back to item 13, the action list. Was there anything on there that anybody?
Councillor Cole has a hand.
Councillor Cole?
Councillor Cole, you're muted.
Yeah, halfway down the interim council, NDP. Could we have a deadline for that? It says April. Does that mean April 21?
Yes.
Yep, and the item below, it says March. Presumably that should be March 21.
Yes, it should.
Thank you. That was the only two things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with a hand up there?
I can't see any hands.
No.
Oh, councillor Stutchbury.
Councillor Stutchbury?
Hello, Robin.
I was muted. I think we need to, at some point in our agendas, reflect the fact that we have a new representation on the Community Board. Councillor Mark Cole represented Buckingham Town Council at that meeting. And there's nowhere within the agenda, unless I've missed it, and I apologise if I have, where he can he can reflect his findings of that meeting.
Yeah, that's at the end of the agenda, Robin. It's down-
Item 20.
I missed it. I never saw it. I apologise. That's why I said if I'd missed it, I apologise. Well, I apologise again. Twice in one go, I've had that.
Anything else on the action plan? No?
Who's that? Is that Wickham Sword again?
I don't know. Right, if that's all for the action plan, we shall action list, we'll move on to this back to the major planning application again. Does anybody want to speak on that? Councillor Cole?
Thank you. Yeah, this is Western Farm, which we're revisiting. This has been going on since 2016.
Yeah.
What we have before us tonight are not amended plans for a care home, as it says on the agenda, but a new application for what the developer himself now calls a retirement village. When we opposed the original 75 unit care home application, that was made in 2016 by Minton Healthcare and Oak Retirement Living, we argued that a significant part of it was outside the Buckingham Neighbourhood Plan settlement boundary. Then it was a retirement complex of self-contained dwellings, not a C2 institution, but C3 dwellings which attract a 35% affordable housing content in accordance with our plan. AVDC for once agreed with us, but the developer appealed and it was allowed, the inspector deciding it was a C2 care home, as the dwellings would not constitute individual living and would not therefore be subject to affordable housing contribution and that it was an acceptable form of development, even though it's outside our settlement boundary. Anyway, since then, a new developer, Briar Retirement Living, has taken over the site and in 2018 submitted a new application, now with 72 modular buildings. And they described it at our interim council in December 2018 as a retirement living village. So the care home's gone. I accordingly submit this is a new application and should now be classified as C3 dwellings with 35% of them affordable. Many of the original amenities which moved the inspector to consider this to have been a care home, such as communal sitting rooms throughout, the cinema, the therapy room, they've all disappeared. The public bistro has been considerably reduced in size and there's no corridors connecting the stairwells on each floor for staff in case of lift failure or of course fire escapes. So apart from being socially unfriendly, keeping people locked in their rooms, which can only be accessed by one lift, these also present a possible risk, which I think the Fire Authority should be commenting on. There've been a number of comments by highways about the narrowness of the footpaths and the spur roads, which do not meet required standards, not even L D V A standards, but they were nonetheless approved by the inspector, who and they say it can't be changed. I say this is no longer the same application, which the inspector approved on appeal on highways, should therefore revisit this. Look at it again. It should still be noted, the entrance is on a dangerous bend on the A422 and there's only 72 parking spaces for 72 dwellings. So where do visitors go? Where do the staff go? Modular blocks no longer have the features which reflect the Edwardian houses opposite, so they fail to meet both BND and AV Design Guidelines. Those L D V A guidelines, by the way, Buckingham Vision and Design Statement, which was adopted as a specialist planning guide by AVDC, remember, and only one of the three facing on to Brackley Road has gables, dormers and what I'd call quasi chimneys. So for all the above reasons, together with the delay in obtaining a nationally important architectural report on the 42 bound bodies found on this site last year, I propose, just as I did 19 months ago, that we oppose this application as failing to comply with policies HP1, HP4 and HP5 of the Buckingham Neighbourhood Plan, still the overarching development plan for Buckingham. Thank you.
I'd like to second that, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely. I agree with that. Anybody else want to speak on that?
I can see hands from councillors Stutchbury, Fry, Ralph and Holm.
Okay, councillor Stutchbury?
For information, I have been in correspondence and copying the planning clerk into archaeology. I am assured that they cannot deviate from the original archaeological report and that still has to be produced. I'm also presently in the process, because after being aware of this application and I listen carefully to everybody there, I think I'm asking to call this to committee, because I think, and my grounds for that were the circumstances are different. But I won't vote on it tonight, because I've already effectively asked it to go to committee. And the other thing I'm really worried about over and above the planning issues is the fact that this could be the poignant era in Buckingham, which could navigate the entire history that we do not know about. We don't know the extent of the archaeology outside the site and we know that there was some archaeology found within the town council's land adjacent, which was a cremation burial. And I think there really needs to be a serious look at this. We only have one opportunity to record our history for the future generations and this is it. I also understand, which I hope the Town Clerk will read out, there was a letter sent in, which I thought we might have had at public session from Ed Grimsdale in relation to this application. Like with the permission of the Chairman, as I'm not going to vote on this for obvious reasons being on the planning committee, I'll ask the Chairman and the Mayor whether he'll allow the Town Clerk to read that out. Yeah, gee, sorry.
I did have an exchange with councillor Ralph before the meeting. He was going to read that. But I'm happy to, if I can find it on my emails, unless councillor Ralph has it more quickly than me.
Okay. Has councillor Ralph got it?
Yes, he has.
He has. Carry on then.
Thank you. Can I say two things, if I may? The question of one lift per block and knowing to connection and you having to go out on to the into the open air is obviously a problem and I wouldn't want any of the developers' people to say that it's not possible to be flexible when designing modular buildings, as I actually sold modular buildings for a while in my previous life and I know they can be extremely flexibly designed to absolutely whatever specification is required. So it would only, in my opinion, be a question of wanting to keep costs to a minimum that would stop them wanting to actually connect the blocks in the way that we would like, so that if one lift fails, then there's easy access to other blocks and their lifts. That's the first thing. Secondly, the note from Ed Grimsdale reads as follows. Reinternment of human remains from the site should occur in a purpose-built vault on a new site close to the original site, possibly within a landscape design garden with above-ground access. It may be appropriate for the vault and its setting to be created within Buckingham Cemetery, which lies adjacent to the archaeological site. The landscaped garden should include archaeological pieces recovered during investigation and fixed panels illustrating and describing the archaeology of the skeletons. And as Town Clerk quite rightly says, I sent a little note through to him because I had understood that Mr Grimsdale had written to the town council with that, but I'm more than happy to have read it out.
Thank you.
I have councillor Fry and Harvey.
Councillor Fry?
Nothing from me, thank you.
No. Sorry, councillor Harvey?
Just to support the comments so far, particularly obviously councillor Cole's erudite summary. I think we simply have to reject this on the basis, it's not in the neighbourhood development plan. I think all the other things obviously matter. But this is a test of our neighbourhood plan. I think we should also say very clearly that if this is approved by the Buckinghamshire Council, then they expect this to be for us as a council to get asked specifically to say to call it in as we've done before. Because I know the neighbourhood development plan is now superordinate to all other plans, because it is the last made plan. The veil against what is not being made. Or it must be respected. If it isn't respected, what's the point of having it? So absolutely agree, it's outside, most of it is outside of our our settlement boundary, therefore it is to be rejected, simply as.
Councillor Harens has a hand.
Councillor Harens?
Today's settlement boundary. Why do you think that the Buckingham Neighbourhood Development Plan is relevant? If it's not in Buckingham, as we defined it, which we did very carefully for the neighbourhood plan, if it isn't in it, well, sorry, it's not in it.
Sorry, do you want me to respond, Madam Mayor?
Yes, absolutely.
The settlement boundary defines what we regard as being the boundary for further development within the town. It isn't beyond our parish boundary. Our parish boundary extends beyond that. And therefore I think it is entirely reasonable for us to say it is not compliant with our plan, simple as.
But if it's not in the area, well, fair enough, if you think that applies, but if I was looking at it as a lawyer, I would immediately say, doesn't count, it's not in it. You know?
Thank you, Rob.
Okay, was there anyone else?
Councillor Cole and councillor Stutchbury have their-
Sorry, councillor Cole?
Thank you. If I could just come back to Paul, up to Paul Harens. It is within the boundary, part of it, but the significant part is outside. And as John said, it's still within the parish, so it is very much within our province.
Thank you. Sorry, councillor Stutchbury, you said was?
Outside is the obvious concerns with this application. There was a question raised by Mr Grimsdale. It wouldn't be beyond us to discuss whether those are feasible to take forward through a section 106 agreement. Because we don't know the outcome of this and we don't know what the end planning application will be. But if we don't get involved in those negotiations and it won't happen, because it won't be funded through any other means, will it? So I think we need to consider that. The other element about the calling that will take place, be assured, and the other bit about the neighbourhood plan, until such time as the, as I understand, till such time as the emerging bail plan takes precedent. At the moment, the neighbourhood plan is still got weight. When I mean weight, it has influence on planning terms. There will be a point where that isn't so, but we could argue it hasn't got to that point yet. And I hope that's what would be major in it. We have to defend or you have to defend the neighbourhood plan. It's the only thing we've got. It's the only planning document we've got for Buckingham.
Absolutely. Are we all agreed then that we oppose this?
Councillor Smith has a hand.
Councillor Smith?
Thank you. There's actually two issues here and I wouldn't really want to get them confused. The first one is the planning application and that's really what we're dealing with tonight. The issue with the with the remains that were found and how they're subsequently dealt with is not for us at this meeting. That's for county archaeology to determine. The only bit of archaeology that concerns us at this stage is that the developer's archaeological report is yet to be received by anybody, which is in arrears. So I tend to think that we should be concentrating just on that planning application, as declared on the agenda. And I move that we take it to the vote.
Absolutely. So can we go to a vote on this for everyone who agrees we should oppose? Lost everybody.
That is unanimous, except for councillor Stutchbury.
And I'm having to abstain because I was doing it on planning.
Okay.
What about our new councillor? We can't see her hand.
Is she there?
Sorry.
Yeah, yes, she is there.
It was just that, it's my phone, so I can't really show her. She usually uses a computer, but she had she didn't have that with her today.
Do we put her down as an abstention then?
Yeah.
And Paddy as well, hasn't voted. Oh dear, let me give him a shake.
He's watching the clock.
Oh dear, sorry, Paddy.
Voting on opposing me.
I love that.
I don't think that, I think that's just brilliant.
Whatever you want to put me down for, dear, that'll be fine.
That's brilliant. Flap his hand in a minute.
I was hoping that Paddy was going to come back and just as he sat down, I was going to shout, go!
He was coming back. Where's he gone now? Barry Collins?
We're still on YouTube.
I propose we've got enough to move forward. And letting him do his football.
Yeah, I would-
They kept me on the call, but they just had me, I've just said I'm abstaining on the votes so that she can fill in.
I just see that.
Okay, thank you.
Next.
Right.
Can I, just as a general point of order, especially on planning, councillors should be part of the, or at least clearly be hearing the debate before they vote on planning issues and if you have to leave room for it. It's best not to vote on planning, otherwise we could be a bit challenging.
I think he could get legally challenged if he comes from the football match and votes.
I've been listening to it all, Robin. It's thrilling.
I envy you, Paddy.
We have a-
I know it's your team.
Right, okay, yeah, let's move on. Can we move on?
Yes, please.
Right. Right. So our next item is item 15, which is the motion from councillor Christine Stren Clark.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, is it? I wish, having spoken to various people and agreed this with the town clerk as well to make sure it's all legal, I wish this amended version of the printed motion, which I believe he said should come up on your screens now.
Uh, oh yes.
I'll just read it out. I move that Buckingham Town Council establishes a working group to examine issues by recent racist events, seeking to establish how these may affect Buckingham and the steps that it may be possible to take in order to improve the lives of all residents. Membership of the working group would comprise town councillors plus an equal or greater number of residents drawn from the Black and Minority ethnic community and their supporters, including from the university. We would expect the working group to bring their first progress report to full council on November the 23rd and present their final recommendations by the end of this council year.
Okay, I can see hands from.
It needs to be seconded first. It needs to be seconded before we discuss anything.
Yeah, I may. Councillor Smith? First.
Yeah, I'm happy to second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Right, sorry councillor Newell, was it you next?
Yeah, I think I was actually before Mike because I wanted to second it as well, but never mind. I'm very happy to support the motion and if it's passed, happy to be a member of the working group. Thank you.
I was going to say, is it possible for me to speak to the motion? Or do I have to wait till everyone has spoken?
I propose that you speak to the motion.
Yeah. Carry on councillor Stren Clark.
In the public session before entering on the 22nd of June, Rebecca Clark spoke very powerfully about the Black Lives Matter campaign and our council plan to challenge racism and promote diversity and inclusion in our town. There are three reasons why we need to attack this important issue now. One of them, of course, is legal compliance with the Equality Act of 2010. That's the duty of any organisation. So we need to check, I would hope this committee would check, that do we need to update any of our policies or terms of reference? Second thing is that in the light of renewed public focus on unconscious bias and institutional racism, we do need to reassess our own attitudes and listen to those who are so often on the receiving end of unfair discrimination, which is why I think they have to be, some have to be on this committee. The third is that it is, of course, our social responsibility to ensure that all our residents feel equally valued, especially because our university has a high proportion of students from diverse backgrounds. So summing up, our ultimate aim is to break down barriers between different ethnic groups and between students and the town to the benefit of all our residents. Thank you.
I can see hands from councillors Mahi, P Collins and Cole and Tri.
Okay, any idea who's first?
Well, the order I noticed was Mahi, P Collins, Cole.
Okay councillor Mahi?
Thank you, Mayor. I cannot support this motion at all because I find the motion racist and therefore I cannot support it. And it's the whole structure, it is racist and demeaning to me.
Thank you. Councillor Tri, you said wanted to speak?
I said then, I said then P Collins, then Cole.
Sorry councillor Collins?
I agree with councillor Mahi, it's essentially racist. It's stacking the odds with the minority excluding the majority. How do you expect that to be fair? It's not fair and as a bye-bye, as I've got Irish antecedents, can I claim ethnic minority status because my ancestors are persecuted by the English as well? This is absolutely absurd. Who's judging the who's an ethnic minority, who isn't? Why should only they have the majority voice? You might as well just not bother with it. It's a waste of time and it's racist.
Okay, thank you. And councillor?
Councillor Cole, I hadn't been.
Councillor Cole?
Councillor Cole, you're muted.
Councillor Cole?
Yeah, I absolutely fully support councillor Stren Clark's motion. I think in the five years I've been to council, this is one of the most important motions that's come before us. We do have to do something to sort this out. Originally, as on your agendas, the, it said Black Lives Matter movement. I requested that be removed because that movement has been discredited and it's also racist in itself because all lives matter, not just black lives. But I am very pleased to see that, that having been dropped, that you have now added after residents drawn from the BAME community and their supporters, which of course is open to anybody, not just members of the BAME community, it's their supporters. And that to me swings it now. So I fully support this and congratulations Christine on bringing this before the council.
Okay, was it councillor Tri?
Yeah, then I can see councillor Gaitley and councillor Stutchbury and councillor Mahi after that.
Okay.
No, I can't support this. I recognise the reason for having the motion and the first part of it is fine. The membership part and the way that's been put together is the area that I have issue with. So I'm okay with the workshop idea, but the the membership that you're asking to become part of that workshop is where I have issue with. I don't think it's inclusive, it's very much exclusive. And therefore I can't support the overall motion because of that membership issue. Thank you.
Councillor Mahi?
Thank you. Unless I'm reading it differently from yourself, councillor Cole, my statement from councillor Stren Clark says, "Membership of the working group would comprise of town councillors plus equal greater members of residents drawn from Black and Minority ethnic communities." Why Black? Why am I not included? Is it because I'm white and does that make this a racist comment? I totally disagree with it and if it does go through, I think that I'll have to take this up further on being a racist, racist motion.
Thank you Andy.
What you really are doing, you're spotlighting me as something different. Now, my other issue is if you do go with all this and that you have a workshop. If you ever, when I was elected as mayor, I thought the councillors elected me as mayor as a councillor, not because they wanted to tick boxes, as a brown person to represent the councillors being a fair council. Now, if you do go through with this workshop, if you do try and elect me again, I have to ask the question, are you really electing me as mayor because I'm brown? Or are you electing me as mayor because you think I'm good enough to do the job? But there was no issue before this, but now you're making it an issue for me to now question. Why? What is the reason that my fellow councillors would elect me as mayor only to take boxes? I feel totally insulted by this whole motion, especially to use the word Black. Three per cent of the population in Britain and the Browns are a high percentage with 83% of whites. I find the whole motion racist.
I've got councillors Gaitley, Stutchbury, Harvey and O'Donoghue.
Okay councillor Gaitley?
Thank you. Yes, I think it's a really important issue. It is an emotive, but I think it is time that we address some of the issues. We've all been aware of incidents that have happened worldwide and there are incidents closer to home. And I think it's time to listen and educate ourselves. I don't think we're going into it with preconceived ideas. But I think it's an important issue that needs to be addressed and it needs to be addressed within our community. Thank you.
And councillor Harvey, did you say was next?
Yep, hello. Just to clarify, BAME probably stands for Black, Asian and Minority Ethnic People. So to answer councillor Mahi's point, it's meant to be inclusive of any person who would regard themselves of colour or indeed minority ethnic, which also includes travellers, also includes people from other parts of the parts of the world. It would also include the Irish as well councillor Collins.
And the Welsh.
And so BAME is inclusive of all those who regard themselves as being in a minority ethnic group. And Black and Asian is just typically that's what's been called in the past. For me, this group is about learning. It's about finding out what are the places where there is still sadly racism in existence within the Buckingham community, perhaps within, that's how we operate as well. And to ensure that we root it out wherever we possibly can. And to answer councillor Mahi's direct question, I voted for you Andy because you were the best candidate at the time. It had nothing to do with your ethnicity at all. And that's the kind of approach we want, the sort of thing that we do. And I guess this working group is designed to try and find that out and make some progress. Councillor Collins, could I please ask that you either mute yourself or stop moving your computer around? Because every time you do, it scratches and makes a noise for us all to hear. Thank you. So I support the motion because I think it's about learning, it's about investigating. And I think that's something that we as town councillors should always be doing.
Thank you.
Donoghue.
Councillor Donoghue.
Hi Lisa. Hi, sorry, I thought Robin was going to be before me. Yeah, this is a difficult one because I've heard the words diversity used quite a lot. And I think diversity and racism are different. You know, I explained to Rebecca before, if you're looking at our town council and you say the town council needs more diversity, you don't know my background. You don't know where my friendship group came from. You don't know that if I heard racism, sexism, ageism, I'd be one of the first people to put a stop to it, but I'm white. So the whole diversity thing to me, I think you've got to know who people are first to presume because they're white, they're not diverse. And I just think those two need to be, you know, separated. I remember Rebecca, when she came to us before and she said that Stowe had made her diversity officer. And I'm really glad that Stowe have done that. I just wondered, were they doing it for the right reasons? Because, you know, either they've been brushing racism and racist issues under the carpet or they're like Andy's mentioned about ticking boxes. I would hope that people are going into this for the right reasons and not because we need to be seen to be doing something. You know, the issues in Buckingham, we already work quite closely with the university, with the Pontio Group. And again, I would have hoped if there was any racism within the university, that those issues would have been told to us by now. And as far as I'm aware, they haven't. And I certainly haven't heard or overheard any issues while I've been living here. No, you know, no derogatory name-calling or anything because our town is quite mixed thanks to the university. So yeah, me over now. Thank you Geraldine.
Thank you. So do we have councillor Stutchbury, did you say waiting?
Yes.
Yeah. Robin?
Well firstly, I'm supporting this motion for many reasons. The first person I met before I become on the town council was councillor Stren Clark. And through my entire time of being a councillor, she has always sought to be inclusive, to be direct, to be responsible and to represent a broad spectrum of the council. I don't believe councillor Stren Clark would do anything in any way whatsoever to challenge, offend or depry any other member of this council. She's bringing this motion forward because there's an obvious need for discussion. Discussion does not in itself render a person within that discussion racist. What it facilitates is the difference and the diversity of us to express ourselves fully. And what it will facilitate is a sensible conversation about this in a Buckingham context against the background of a changing world. Now councillor Stren Clark has sought to consult before bringing this motion and councillor Cole brought for an amendment. And she accepted that amendment, which demonstrates her willingness to listen to others before bringing it to council. It is not to offend and every member of this council is valued and every member of this council at their time, be it whatever role they've done, has created a better community. And that's not singling anyone out for this. But this isn't about us as a council, this is about the community. On that basis, I'm happy to support this. I recognise when I say that, that my background is hugely different to many people who have moved into the town. And it's much different to councillor Donoghue's background and it's hugely different to councillor Mahi's background. And I recognise that, but councillor Mahi and councillor Don are just the sorts of people we need on this group to invigorate this group and to challenge and to discuss. Because only by challenging and discussing each other will we find the right route forward for Buckingham. This is only a start and the findings of this will come back to a council at some point. And it's at that point we have to make a decision on them findings. Investigation and research in a sensible and adult way is hurting nobody. And on that basis, I will be voting for the motion tonight because it's the correct thing to do in a changing world.
So councillors Cole and Stren Clark and Mahi wish to come back.
Okay, councillor Cole?
Yeah, thank you. I was just going to add to what John said. I'm looking at the moment at the homeoffice.gov.uk website, which says BAME stands for Black, Asian and Minoric Ethnic and is defined as any ethnic group except white ethnic groups. So councillor Mahi, Andy, I'm very, I apologise if you're offended by that, but I took my cue from the Home Office, having very, very carefully checked Christine Stren Clark's motion. And that is why I was supporting it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. Christine, next.
Well, yeah, I was going to try and sum up, but if Andy wanted to go first.
Okay.
Andy?
Thank you.
Councillor Mahi?
The email I have from councillor Stren Clark does not mention the word BAME on it, councillor Cole, unless I've missed something in the translation as they say. Because I have here that residents drawn from Black and Minority Ethnic Communities.
I'm sorry, that was my error. My error because I was translating BAME into words.
Okay, I still, having lived in Buckingham since 1990, I don't think there's an issue in Buckingham about racism. And I think I'm the best placed person to know if there's going to be an issue of racism. And I find that these kind of workshops really highlights the differences. I would now feel a lot more different from the rest of it because you've spotlighted me as being different by having these kind of workshops. And that's what you don't understand. You're really spotlighting me as a different person now by having a workshop to see whether I'm being discriminated against or anybody else in Buckingham. Whereas I thought I was just part of everybody else as a community, as another person, as a councillor and another town member of Buckingham, not to be spotlighted and saying, oh, you're going to be different now because you're going to have a workshop to discuss why you people are brown, black or any other colour. So I find, I still find the whole thing very insulting.
I just want to say, Andy, we don't think of you as any different and I'm really sorry that this has made you feel like that. I don't object to a workshop, but I do object to it being just that group. I think if we're going to look at what's happening.
I think if we're going to look at what's happening in Buckingham, which I haven't heard of anything happening, but if we're going to look at it as a whole, we have to invite all the residents, whatever colour creed they are. It's got to be inclusive and the workshop's got to be a discussion amongst everyone, not just minority groups. Thank you. If I can come back in now and just try and, it's very difficult to sum this up actually. I'm really sorry that Andy, you know, feels himself under attack somehow because obviously there's no intention to attack anybody. I mean, I'm not attacking white people, black people, you know, brown people. You know, we're all people, goodness sake. But the whole point about the Black Lives Matter thing is that in the United States to start with, that what they were really trying to say was that Black Lives Matter as well. You know, because the Blacks in the United States have been so pushed down, so unfairly treated in the criminal justice system, as I think you'll find they are to some extent here as well. You know, the number of, well, I won't go into all that. But so it's not meaning only black. Or, you know, we're talking about, you know, everybody. I just wanted to take up what Lisa said about Stowe. Yes, Becky has just been appointed Equalities Officer, but they've always had an Equality Action Group and International Student Group and all these sort of things. It's just that they wanted to appoint somebody who was overarching all these different small groups. Who were looking at equal treatment of people from, basically from different ethnic groups.
Okay, glad to hear about that Christine, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't new, it's just been appointed. I would hope actually, you know, that everybody needs some education. I mean, you know, town councillors, our staff, you know, everybody needs education in racial issues. There are online training schemes that help sort out so you can recognise what unconscious biases you have yourself, which you might not realise you do. You know, I've done all these tests and think, God, I didn't think I had that sort of bias. But, you know, you really find that you do because it was the way you've been brought up and, you know, the people you've been brought up surrounded by. But I really do hope that we can look at this as a positive way forward. And yeah, when I said, you know, and their supporters, perhaps we could, you know, just say, all right, we could have anybody in, but I would like if we are getting people from the BAME community to feel that they're coming sort of in a safe place and they're coming to address the council or to talk to the council. And that really should be what they're doing. Now, if we're doing something about some planning, you know, architectural, you know, group or something. Yes, we might invite some people from the Buckingham Society and the town council. But we wouldn't think, all right, right, that's got to be equally, everybody in the whole town's got to come in. You know, it would only be the people who knew something about it or were actually interested or from the town council. You know, that's really all I'm saying. I don't want to exclude anybody at all.
Can I propose we move to the vote?
But I think the very thing is, we are feeling, a lot of us, that it is excluding a lot of residents. So maybe we could just have that wording slightly different.
I'd move we go to the vote, chairman.
Councillor Stutchbury, I'm still waiting to speak and I have the right to speak.
Councillor Mahi?
I didn't think we had an issue until we brought this up. And we're importing an issue in America into the UK, an issue that does not exist. And I just can't see it, why we are importing an American problem that they have and making it ours. It is not our issue. So why are we doing it? I just don't get it. And how are you going to break up, do the workshop on what percentages on the breakdown of the society in the UK? Or is it going to be more ethnic? How is the whole thing going to work? Because it can be reverse racism as well. That's the biggest danger. Reverse racism is where the whites are being discriminated against, not being equally represented in a workshop.
If I may just come back, Andy, I know that I have heard that quite a number of university students don't stay in Buckingham at the weekend. They get out, they don't come and support our, okay, the pubs are closed at the moment and shops because they feel that they're very excluded. That's one thing. The other thing is, you know, if you allow people to say things, now so many, say mothers of mixed-race children, they immediately come in and say, you know, the problems, you know, that their children are having at school. And, you know, it breaks your heart really when you hear about children, sort of, they come back from their school first day at school and say, you know, mummy, why did you make me black? And all that sort of thing, you know, it's just terrible. There is an issue and it's not just the little ones because you hear it from the mothers in the playground, pulling their children away from Black children, maybe not away from Asian children who are often much more acceptable, you know, to the white public. Anyway, I'll shut up now.
Councillors Smith and Ralph have their hands and councillor Mordu.
Sorry, who was first on there?
Smith, Ralph and Mordu.
All right, councillor Smith.
Chairman, the standing, outstanding orders require when somebody calls for the vote that the vote be put. That has been called by councillor Stutchbury. We should be moving to the vote without having any further contributions.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Okay, agreed.
Point of order, that's not correct. If you go to the vote, then the majority of councillors have to say they want to go for the vote. No one person can dictate it. So Mike Smith put go to the vote, then if the majority of councillors say they want to go to the vote, we go to the vote. But it cannot be one person's decision. That's not what's in standing order, it's not the rules.
Well, the votes we go to vote on that then, Paddy.
Exactly, let's do it properly, Robin, come on.
All right, can we ask councillors then?
That means that you'll be happy. All those in favour of moving to the vote?
Can we let the chair do that, please? I just feel a bit odd that Robin's just done that.
I just did it to encourage things along, sorry.
Don't worry, I'll slap his hands the next time I see him. I can't believe how many's got their hands up anyway, but.
I want to speak again. I've spoken once, everyone else has spoken a dozen times.
Not all of us, Paddy. And the chairman, it's a call to see who wants a vote.
Well, I don't have a vote, I want to speak.
Right, so Geraldine, these are people, this is a vote to go to the vote, yeah?
Yeah.
And I can see councillor Harvey, Smith, O'Donoghue, Newell, Mordu, Hirons and Stutchbury. I make that seven?
Seven. So there's seven of us.
So against and abstentions?
Against first, then abstentions later, to make sure you've got your numbers right.
So against, I have G Collins, Ralph, Try, Mahi, Cole and P Collins. I make that six. So abstentions, Gatesley and Bloomfield, I make that two. So in that case, so we go to the vote then.
Okay.
That'll be those in favour.
So those in favour of the motion as it is?
Councillors Harvey, Ralph, Smith, Strain Clark, Gatesley, Newell and Stutchbury. I make that seven.
And?
Can we just check if councillor Ahmed's voting because this is close?
I don't think that's legal still, I don't believe it.
Not if she's not in the meeting, really.
Yeah, I'm not hearing anything, so we'll move on. Sorry, against, that's seven, four. So votes against.
Votes against.
G Collins, Try, Mahi, Hirons, Cole, O'Donoghue, Mordu and P Collins. I make that eight. I miss you, so just do that again, please, to make sure I've got you.
On abstaining, abstaining in Paul.
Oh, oh, sorry, so Bloomfield's abstaining.
Sorry, councillor Cole is voting against. I thought councillor Cole voted for.
Right, should we take the, should we be really sure then? Sorry, everyone.
Right, can we repeat that? Everybody in favour?
In favour of the motion.
Yes.
Can we be clear what the motion is, please?
It's on the order paper.
Yes, well, it was slightly changed when.
I should be the one that was.
So just to be clear, the motion is, in town council, establish a working group to examine issues which have been brought to public attention by recent racism. Thinking to establish how these may affect Buckingham and the steps that it may be possible to take in order to improve the lives of all residents. Membership of the working group would comprise town councillors plus an equal or greater number of residents drawn from the BAME community and their supporters, including from the university. We would expect the working group to bring their first progress report to full council on November the 23rd and present their final recommendations by the end of this council year. That is the motion.
Okay, so can we have everybody again in favour of that, please?
In favour, we have councillors Harvey, Ralph, Smith, BAME Clark, Gatesley, Newell, Cole and Stutchbury. Which is eight people.
Right, and votes against?
Councillors G Collins, Try, Mahi, Hirons, O'Donoghue, Mordu and P Collins. And I make that seven people. And then abstent, so the one abstention is councillor Bloomfield. So therefore the motion is carried.
Okay. Well, let's just hope that enough people come along. Well done Christine. I think it's bad news for Buckingham. Sorry. Right, we shall move on.
It's very good news.
It's good news if everybody's taking part, but not if it excludes people.
We've moved on from there, councillor.
We are moving on.
Motion, we now move forward, mayor, I believe.
We are moving forward, Robin, but I do have to say I'm very disappointed that we can't have an inclusive workshop. Right, item 16, Covid-19 update.
So Covid-19 update, councillors will be aware of most of what's going on with Covid. As you know, the information centre is now open. They have had three tourists since they opened a week back last Saturday apparently. But lots of people coming in, having conversations, local people wanting someone to talk to, which is part of the service the TIC fund provides. I think it does send a really positive message that the TIC is open and that Buckingham is open for business appropriately. You would have seen and have been endless emails, now tonight is not the time to discuss the crossing at the bottom of Morton Road, but to note that that's been done by Buckinghamshire Council and there's seeking feedback. So there's an old council that's been copied into, I think, that email requesting feedback. So they're open to that. I think to be fair, Buckinghamshire Council is trying to do what's right for the town and it's just a very tricky town to solve problems. And the market's running really well now. The green spaces team have been carried on working right the way through. Burials are picking up a bit and we expect ashes burials to increase through the autumn where people have been storing ashes until they can have more people attending funerals. The maximum for funerals has gone up to 30 with the new guidance this week, so that makes funerals slightly more sociable. The office staff continue to mostly work from home. There's usually somebody in the office each day, but the office is still closed to the public and will carry on for that for the foreseeable future. Although obviously the library is now open with restricted circumstances, so we're working well with the library staff. The Laisel Community Centre is now able to take bookings for sporting activities following recent guidance that came out. Sam's working really hard with hirers to get all the risk assessments in place. Because it's one thing being allowed to have something, but it's a very different thing to be able to do it in a way that meets all the government's guidance. And if we don't meet guidance, then we don't live up to our insurers. So it's likely that most hirers won't be back in Laisel until September when schools go back. That's the way most people are planning. You have seen that Fringe Week is currently ongoing as an online event. That's going quite well. We've recently, were very recently told that play around the parishes can't go ahead. There's been a risk assessment by public health of that, so Buckinghamshire Council will play around the parishes. We're looking to put together a programme of youth support, whether it's youth workers in the town or some kind of activities for young people, which is tricky because youth clubs have had to close and furlough workers. As councillors are involved, we're looking for ways of doing that and we'll be reporting to TCNE with a full proposal at the end of the month on what we can do. And apart from that, meetings, it is now, there's been a slight change to the law. So it would be possible for a council to meet in the flesh if there was a business justification for doing it. I'm not proposing we move to that at the moment because I can't in any way guarantee that we could do it in a safe or appropriate way. We certainly couldn't do it with all councillors. So at the moment, we can't meet the requirements by the business justification for doing, but having in flesh meetings. But obviously we'll keep watching the law and the legislation as it comes through. Happy to take any questions. Councillor Stutchbury has a hand.
Councillor Stutchbury?
It's a simple observation at the moment, the unitary councils on Wednesday's meeting are massive, meeting on Microsoft Teams. So obviously all of us can't meet. I think that needs to be, the meeting bit needs to be kept under review. Especially if there's an opportunity safely to meet the new councillor in some way. Which would be good if that was only a face-to-face meeting with the mayor and maybe one or two others that saved distancing to welcome them if nothing else. I think that's something we should try to do. But I do think that the work was done in the town centre recently caused some discussion. And I think, I believe they're working to resolve that with signage. But I do think that we're still in very early days of all this and it's a changing feat, isn't it? And can I thank the town clerk and the officers for the work they've done, especially in this coming week where they're put together under difficult circumstances, work towards the fringe, which has started with the previous chairman and deputy chairman before I took over. And I think we have to applaud them for what they're doing. And it's not easy. And can I thank them and be recorded our thanks for what they're doing.
Okay, thank you. Has anybody else got their hand up?
Councillor Cole.
Councillor Cole?
Thank you, madam mayor. The town clerk just mentioned the crossing by the King's Head, but said we can't do with it tonight. But it says on the agenda to discuss a verbal update. Steve Atkins from Buckinghamshire Council is waiting for feedback from us about this. So is there a good reason we cannot discuss this tonight?
I didn't say sorry, I didn't mean to imply that we can't discuss it. I just implied that it might not be appropriate given the time of the meeting, but councillors certainly can discuss it as much.
Well, I think this is urgent enough, we do need to discuss it. There's been so much feedback, as you've probably seen on the Facebook pages. Personally, generally, I agree with the crossing, but the signage is wrong. It shouldn't be telling drivers to look out for social distancing. It's got to tell drivers to look out for pedestrians, give way to pedestrians.
Absolutely right.
Absolutely, yeah. Anybody else wishing to speak on that?
Councillor Stutchbury has a hand.
Councillor Stutchbury?
I take some responsibility having posted a picture of the crossing and saying that it was helping. So, and that was just to discover this debate. And if we hadn't had debate about it, we wouldn't have found out all the opinions of the community around it. So that was constructive. But I do think it's the signage element of it and giving people the purpose of it, which I think is the Buckinghamshire Council's responsibility. I think I saw a chain of emails, a really good email today from members with their views on it, which was going to go back to the officer. And, and I saw a reasonably sensible debate from members of the public raising very much the same questions as councillor Mark Cole raised, which is the correct signage and whatever. I personally found it a lot safer to cross the road without any signage because I could stand in the middle of the road where I couldn't before. And I did note this from a comment from Ed Grimsdale about disability, at least you could get to the middle safely and you could wait. We're crossing that road, it's a really wide road. So it's not all bad, but I think it just needs improving.
Councillor Harvey and councillor Bloomfield have hands.
Okay, councillor Harvey?
Give me a John.
John?
My apologies. I tried to mute myself, but I'm not doing, saying anything.
That's all right.
Which disrupts everybody else. So I try and mute myself in between times. I'm just saying that certainly from the thread that I started on Buckingham What Matters as well, there's a lot of debate in the town about this and some of the debate revolves around the legality of the crossing and whether it's, whether it's in conformance with the highway code. So I think we should really be asking the Buckinghamshire Council for the legal clarity about this because if there were to be, heaven forbid, but if there were to be an accident involving a, a vehicle and a pedestrian on the crossing, then all the parties involved need to know what, where they stand. Because at the moment, I'm just not sure what the legality is. And I think the Buckinghamshire Council should be able to provide that, necessarily put in place a, a temporary perhaps road order of some kind to give it the necessary force that it should have. If it hasn't got that, then we are at risk, I think, of making lives very difficult for people who might happen to get involved in some sort of incident.
Okay, thank you.
That's all right, Geraldine. John's said what I was going to say.
Okay. Thanks, Terry. Has anybody else got their hands up?
Councillor Stutchbury.
Councillor Stutchbury?
If, I know whether it's under the guise of the area technician for who put it in or who put it in. But I'm quite happy to join in the correspondence to get the reassurance that councillor Harvey's seeking because we are not the highway authority. The highway authority is Buckinghamshire Council and we need that reassurance. And I don't think that's an unreasonable request. The officers would have took this presumably against their own advice. So they should be able to answer those questions adequately. And if they aren't able to answer those questions, they were the right questions to be asked, weren't they? So, so I don't think that's wrong in doing that. I'm happy to work with the town clerk tomorrow on that, but I don't think discussing it in any length, you really don't need to hear me again.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, so we'll move on to item seventeen, the unitary council.
Thank you. So in terms of, there are various things that councillors are already aware of. In terms of new information, you'll remember that we put in a bid to be a devolution pilot. So the shadow Buckinghamshire Council had planned for five town and parish councils to be pilots in year one to take to work up business plans with them, which they would then choose whether or not to approve to take on further devolved assets and services. That process, what they were originally to have decided who the pilots were going to be in March, obviously that has been delayed given all the Covid nineteen efforts. The officers who would have been doing that work are now moving back into their, well, their new jobs, not, not back to their old jobs, they will be around. They've changed the approach slightly. They're now going to have one pilot in each of the sixteen community board areas and set, except for the two community board areas where no, no bids were received. They had a much higher number of bids than I thought. I think they said eighty or something. It was a high number of bids. So that means in the Buckinghamshire, sorry, the Buckingham and villages community board that we're part of, one of the councils within there will be a pilot. We'll find out in August if that will be us. If so, we'll have a very quick turnaround to do some business planning and get bids in if you want to do anything from next April. And as best we can, we're ready to do that should it arrive. So I'll be reporting back in September how that's gone. Robin has a hand.
Okay, Robin?
Just to say, it is worth noting that we have to be fair on this. Councillor Warren White did put a strong attempt to get funding for us and he obviously lost that argument. But he has, and the councillors have retained us on the reserve list, as I read.
But Robin, that's the next item.
Is it?
Yeah.
No, well, I thought it is.
Actually, two items away.
Yeah. So is there anybody else speaking on this one? No, we're okay. Okay, we should move on to item eighteen, the annual accounts and governance review. So eighteen point one is to receive and approve. There you go.
So councillors would have received the, or the councillors' governance review, which has been signed by our internal auditor. I've signed the paper copy that Geraldine's got of the first section that I approved. Tonight it's for councillors to agree and Geraldine to sign. You may note that the dates on it would imply that we've, we've out of time, but actually they've delayed all the deadlines by three months this year. So the change to the dates aren't reflected on the forms, but we are one in time with the revised dates.
I've left the form in the other room. I just need to go and get it. I have the form. So have we any questions on that before we proceed?
Councillor Stutchbury has a hand.
Councillor Stutchbury?
Not a question, just to thank the town clerk for meeting all the targets. We didn't meet them in an earlier one. And, and this is with the three month time limit, we are going to meet those targets and, and thank you for the work you've done on it.
Okay. Right, do you want me to sign these now, Paul?
Well, if councillors vote to agree, yes.
Yeah. Okay, have we got anybody else wanting to speak or are we all agreed on any, all of these councils? Agreed?
Yep.
Yeah.
I'll take that as unanimous.
Yeah, one for me. Right.
Agreed, agreed.
Okay, I shall go ahead and sign it.
Yeah.
Sign it with that Wickham Wanderer's pen.
I haven't got one, Robin.
You wouldn't know where to get there, Robin.
We don't run it up by now.
I've been to Wickham a lot in recent months. Paddy, you'll ever see. I've been to the football ground as well. Not for a match though, unfortunately.
Thank you very much. So we'll now publish those for public.
Okay. Right. Just move my other page. Okay, we've gone to item nineteen, the emergency.
Geraldine, sorry, we just need to note eighteen point two, there's not a decision to make.
All right, yeah. Eighteen point two, receive the final internal audit report, note, the note, noting. Everybody happy?
Yep.
Yeah.
Good.
Yes. Item nineteen, the emergency active travel fund, to receive an update.
Just to remind councillors, at the last meeting, we looked at a bid from Buckinghamshire Council. It was a proposal, a rough proposal. Way in from Dorkin to middle of town. That was to bid for a scheme to be funded through government money in terms of nineteen response. We've informed that we have, we're not on the shortlist, but we're at a first reserve on that. And I think that's what councillor Stutchbury was referring to previously, that's his hand up.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was referring to. I won't repeat what I said, but I, I need to say that, I have to say it, he did fight very hard for us, but we only get on the reserve list.
Yeah. Anybody else wishing to speak on that? No? Okay, we shall move on to item twenty, the Silverstone circuit events. To receive a verbal update from councillor Mark Cole.
Thank you, madam mayor. I attended the inaugural Buckinghamshire Council Community Board for Buckingham Villages last week and I asked at the meeting what precautions against Covid nineteen Silverstone circuit have notified to our local authorities in view of the back-to-back Grand Prix's which are going to be run behind closed doors here on August the second and August the ninth. The two Austrian Grand Prix's hold over the last two weekends were restricted to around two and a half thousand personnel and Silverstone will presumably have a similar number each weekend. A current councillor Warren White, who represents the Shire Council Ward, which includes the southern half of the circuit, which is in Bucks, of course, said he'd had discussions but was still awaiting the circuit's plans. Buckingham Town Council, through Paul, raised this with Silverstone on May twenty sixth, but it's only on the morning of the community board we had a reply that a traffic plan would be circulated the following week. Well, community board members were surprised to hear there hadn't been better communication between Silverstone and the councils to the south. Everything appeared to be Northampton centric. Well, today you may have seen from the circuit residence information document, this document which Paul has sent out today, circulated by the town clerk, and while it answers some of our concerns, it states we have worked with the police, public health, highways, England and all local councils to ensure the event can take place in the safest possible environment. Not with Buckingham Town Council, its largest close town. It goes on to say that only a very limited number of personnel will be staying on site and they'll have access to basic commodities and catering to mitigate the need to use local shops and restaurants. What about the several thousand who won't be staying on site? What protection will we in Buckingham in area have against their use of shops, restaurants, supermarkets and filling stations? I'm very happy for Warren to continue delays between Buckingham Shire Council and Silverstone, but we still need answers to the above before personnel start to arrive at Silverstone in two weeks' time. That's two weeks today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Yeah.
Should we, should we not write to, well, I suppose, our county councillors expressing a, a a problem with a very short timescale and with no real response? So I think we, we ought to do something rather than nothing, you know?
Absolutely. Anybody else got a hand up there?
Oh, councillor Stutchbury.
Councillor Stutchbury?
I personally, after listening to councillor Cole at the last meeting, wrote to Mark Uteck as leader of the council. We exchanged a short correspondence on the matter, to which his response to me was the health and safety matters regarding the circuit are dealt with Northamptonshire Council. I went back to him and he hadn't come back to me. So I'm, I'm willing to, it's not a constructive conversation, so I don't see what goes anywhere, but I did take up the discussion because who else would know than the leader of the council? But I do think we need to take that up now as a town council, seeking clarity. Because what I asked was what communications there had been with Buckinghamshire Council, which is what councillor Cole raised. And I just got that single response back that the health and safety of it was dealt with Northamptonshire. I'm happy to share that correspondence, but it's not a good correspondence.
Anybody else?
So the councillors looking for me to write to the circuit again in the morning then, raising concerns that we've discussed.
We had that reply back from my letter, didn't email, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah. In which they promised they would contact us again.
Councillor Smith has a hand.
Councillor Smith?
I do think it's worth pointing out that where they say that they've contacted all the local authorities, they haven't contacted us. I think it's worth putting that as a shot across their bowels and anticipating better course, better communication in the future. I'm, I'm not sure what to do about the, the fear of their mass holds descending on Buckingham. I, I would imagine that plenty of our traders and restaurants and so forth, and that would be actually quite happy to see them, given what they've been through for the last four months. But I do think that that communication issue does need raising.
Yeah, I have raised it with them. Anybody else? Councillor Cole?
Geraldine?
Yeah.
It's Howard here. Just want to remind you, we have a ten o'clock cutoff.
We have.
If there's any urgent business, I should, I move that she should go on to that now.
Yeah. Is everybody happy with that?
Yes, yes, we're happy.
Yes. So we'll go on to, sorry.
I need to, I just need to finish this item off, I'm reporting.
Go on, sorry, Mark, come on.
Sorry, I just need to finish off the item about the council community board. Paul today has had correspondence with Sophie Comer who needs some subgroups set up involving local people. Paul, can I?
Mark, that's, we're about to get down to that in a minute. We're not quite at that item yet.
Okay.
Where was that?
So, so that, that's twenty-two point two.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Twenty-one.
Okay, so we'll quickly move on to twenty-one, the grants review.
So this is a proposal to put, to have a review of our grants process over the summer with two meetings with councillors. So yeah, just recommending to have two workshops over the summer. Councillor Smith.
Councillor Smith?
Move that we accept the recommendations.
Seconded.
Agreed. Okay, we'll move on to item twenty-two, the reports from representatives on outside bodies. So we've got twenty-two point one, which is the county on minutes. Noted.
Noted.
Note, and twenty-two point two is the community board verbal update from the seven.
Councillor O'Donoghue who attended it.
Councillor Cole attended on behalf to represent the town council.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's right that councillor Cole does it.
Yeah, it's just that there were submissions that came out at the beginning of the meeting which were fascinating. I don't know.
No, I think councillor Cole should do it.
Where is councillor Cole?
Yeah, I'm.
At the beginning of the meeting.
Just to be clear, I can't give you an update at the moment because we haven't yet had the minutes through, but
Okay.
What, what we do need to discuss is these subgroups, which Paul knows about. I've had no correspondence about that. Paul has.
So we had an email through today confirming the meeting discussed local priorities and subgroups because they have, they need to get spent by the end or allocated by the end of March. So the priorities they set were three, Covid support and economic recovery, green space and communities and road safety in cycleways. And they're looking to set up five subgroups. So this is for Buckingham and the villages around us. Groups are Covid support and economic recovery, green space and communities, road safety and cycleways, H S two and young people stroke youth. And they're asking to let them know if anybody's interested in attending any of those subgroups. I'm happy to email that out to councillors and if any council, interested councillors wants to attend anything. I'm happy to pass that on. If, if there are key ones where councillors want to attend, we may send officers, but hopefully councillors.
Yeah.
I'd just like to add one thing. We did establish at the beginning of that meeting and after the meeting that Laisel's still a part of Buckingham, which was very constructive.
We did. Okay, if Paul could do that. Item twenty-three are the mayoral engagements. Which really, there haven't been any to attend by myself or Martin.
How's your cycling coming? Geraldine, how's your cycling coming along?
I finished that and I have seventy-five pounds to put into the mayor's charities.
That's good.
Well done.
I'll have to think of something else to do now.
Councillor O'Donoghue has a hand.
Councillor O'Donoghue.
Thank you. Just, just a point of information, Millie. Other mayors have listed when they've attended meetings. I do believe you've attended.
Oh, right.
Things on Zoom. So I do think that it's, it's right and proper that you add those down because you're representing us as mayor.
Okay. Okay, will do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item twenty-four, chairs announcements. I don't think I have any today. So we shall move on to the date of the next meeting. We have interim council on the. So we shall move on to the date of the next meeting, we have interim council on the fourteenth of September and full council on the fifteenth of October, which seems a long way away, doesn't it?
I think it should be the fifth of October.
Fifth?
Yeah, the fifteenth is a Thursday. So it's to be the fifth.
Fifth then.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Well spotted.
I was double checking, put it in my diary, so.
Right, so that is the end of the meeting tonight, folks. Thank you very much for this long evening, sorry it went on so long.